For those who may be new, the title of this study is Lost: A Case Study. And we've been approaching and studying the book of Luke, chapter 15, looking specifically at the parable of the lost things, the lost sheep, the lost coin and the lost son. And we're taking it from a diagnostic perspective where we're looking at the characters involved, trying to identify some of the faults or the flaws that they may have, identify how they correlate with us and how we can find solutions to these problems. We started with the lost sheep and we identified the first disorder with the sheep being scatterbrain syndrome. And we've been looking at the diagnosis, we've been looking at the correlation and we have been looking at the prescription. So we have gone through three prescriptive methods, well, four. We finished the last one on Sunday. So we looked at Apollos Acupuncture, we looked at Priscilla Patch, we looked at burial and brain transplant. And then on Sunday, we finished up Christ copying chemotherapy. So a quick recap on that before we move into bark bug, which is what we touched on last Sunday. So just a reminder that Christ copying chemotherapy limits our behaviour to that of Christ, limits our imitation of others to that of Christ-like characteristics, limits our acceptance of doctrine to that of which Christ inspired, i.e. the word of God. And it is limited by our understanding of the characteristics and words of Christ. So this last prescription to the scatterbrain syndrome, which speaks to us being lacking clarity in direction or in focus. One of the ways to get over that is by ensuring that we follow Christ and we limit our behaviours to the limits that Christ would have placed on us. After we got through that and we did the classwork, we moved to bark bug. And the bark bug comes from, or the term that I coined, comes from the verb bark, which means to hesitate or be unwilling to accept an idea or undertaking. We looked at some of the symptoms that are shown in sheep and we saw hesitancy, unwillingness and course correction. So hesitancy in sheep, if the sheep sees a shadow or a dip in the ground, they would be hesitant to cross it. Unwillingness being that they would refuse to cross it. And course correction being not only would they refuse, they would find a different course to take. We found that the causation behind these behaviours stemmed from poor depth perception. So because sheep struggle with properly assessing the depths of dips in the ground and often mistake shadows for actual chasms in the ground, they find it difficult to progress in areas that one would think that that should be pretty easy to cross. And the last thing that we looked at were the implications of a sheep with the bark bug. And implication being that if the flock or the shepherd move too far away, whilst the sheep hesitates, then the sheep would be lost. And if the sheep cannot find the flock after having taken an alternate route, then the sheep would be lost. So those were some of the implications. So we're going to look now at correlation. How does this affect us? In what ways can this be brought or correlated to us as Christians? So definition wise, the Christian with the bark bug is plagued with doubt and worry. There's a lack of complete confidence in God's word, which leads to hesitancy, unwillingness and alternate action. What are some of the symptoms of this? Firstly, there's hesitancy. So I hesitate in making decisions that are commanded of me in scripture. So that's the first sign that is displayed of the bark bug where I, decisions that are commanded of me, I hesitate in the making of them. Unwillingness is the second symptom. And I choose not to, or I unwillingly make decisions that are commanded of me in the scripture. So unwillingness displays itself either in a decision not to do or a decision to do but with an unwilling heart to make decisions that are commanded of me. And course correction. Course correction, I choose decisions that run counter to what is commanded of me in scripture. And please note, run counter doesn't necessarily mean that it is something that is said for you not to do, but it doesn't align itself with what you are told to do. So you're told to do something, your course correction doesn't necessarily mean that you go and do something that is forbidden definitively through scripture, but in the not doing what you're commanded, you're essentially running counter to scripture. What is the cause? What could lead to this kind of behaviour? Similarly, in sheep, I believe it is a result of poor depth perception on the part of us as Christians. And this manifests itself in the following. First, if the limits, the limits of my own judgement and understanding are what determine the extent of my faith. So when I have poor depth perception as a Christian, then my faith or the extent of my faith is determined by the limits of my own judgement and understanding. If I can't perceive it, if I can't foresee it, then my faith will not extend beyond that point. And that is the same way it affects sheep. When sheep are looking, because as far as they are concerned, they can't see if this is a safe area, then they will not move beyond that area. So the first aspect is that in my poor depth perception is shown through my faith being limited by my own judgement and understanding. The second aspect is in my understanding of my own capabilities determine the course I am willing to take. So my understanding of my own capabilities, these can be my talents, my strengths, my energy, my time, etc. It is that understanding of those capabilities that determine the course I'm willing to take. So if I don't believe myself capable, I am not going down that road. And as Christians, we will see how these these causes for the bark bug, hesitancy, unwillingness or course correction can be very detrimental to us as Christians. What are some of the implications? So essentially, if I cannot see or predict a likely positive end result, then I will hesitate, I will be unwilling and I will course correct. And if I do not think I have within me or access to the ability or tools to manage the current situation, then I will hesitate, I will be unwilling or I will course correct. And we're going to look at why placing those borders on our behaviour cannot be what God wants from us. So let's look at some cases unless there are any questions or comments. Any questions or comments? Everything clear like crystal?
I just want to ask something about is course correction to be aligned to wavering, uncertain about? Clearly uncertain, but is it more like a wavering thing?
Uncertainty, it depends. If uncertain, so if it's a mental wavering, then I would put it under hesitation. But if it's a tangible wavering, as in your acting, your actions are showing wavering, then I would put it under course correction. But if in your head, you're between two things, I would go with hesitation. But if it is now being displayed in your actions, then I'd go with course correction. I don't know if that answers the question.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. So let's look at some cases. So we have King Saul, we're going to look at a scenario from King Saul. We're going to look at a scenario of the ten spies of Israel. We're going to look at Thomas, aka doubting Thomas. And we're going to look at Abram and Sarai before they were renamed. All right. So let's look at King Saul first. Going to need two readers. So just raise your hand. All right, I'm seeing Brother Lacount and I'm also seeing our book come to play today. All right, so Brother Lacount, you'll be reading the yellow. It's the Smith will be reading the green. You can come in.
All right. Now all Israel heard is said that Saul had attacked a garrison of the Philistines and that Israel had also become an abomination to the Philistines. And the people were called together to Saul at Gilgal.
Go ahead, Mr Smith.
Okay, verse five. Then the Philistines gathered together to fight with Israel, thirty thousand chariots and six thousand horsemen, and people as the sand which is on the seashore in multitude. And they came up and encamped in Mishmash to the east of Bethaven.
When the men of Israel saw that they were in danger, for the people were distressed, and the people hid in caves, in thickets, in rocks, in holes and in pits.
And some of the Hebrews crossed over the Jordan to the land of Gad and Gilead. As for Saul, he was still in Gilgal, and all the people followed him trembling.
Then he waited seven days, according to the time set by Samuel. But Samuel did not come to Gilgal, and the people were scattered from him.
Is that made?
So Saul said, bring a burnt offering and peace offerings here to me. And he offered the burnt offering.
Now it happened, as soon as he had finished presenting the burnt offering, that Samuel came and Saul went out to meet him, that he might greet him.
And Samuel said, what have you done? Saul said, when I saw that the people were scattered from me and that you did not come within the days appointed and that the Philistines gathered together at Mikmash.
Then I said, the Philistines will now come down on me at Gilgal, and I have not made supplication to the Lord. Therefore, I felt compelled and offered a burnt offering.
And Samuel said to Saul, you have done foolishly. You have not kept the commandment of the Lord your God, which he commanded you. For now the Lord would have established your kingdom over Israel forever.
But now your kingdom shall not continue. The Lord has sought for himself a man after his own heart.
And the Lord has commanded him to be commander over his people, because you have not kept what the Lord commanded you.
Excellent reading, Brother Lacount, Sister Smith. Thank you very much. All right, so we see the scenario. Talk to me. Would you diagnose King Saul with the bark bug? Yeah or no? Anybody feel free to say yes or no, based on the scenario.
The only problem I have with him is that he wasn't hesitant. He took action, so you know, he actually jumped the gun rather than hesitate. So that's the only thing I would say.
He doesn't show all of the symptoms, Brother Smith.
I know, I know, I understand. I'm only saying to you that would be the first little thing to say, well, okay, fine. Let me look elsewhere. But I didn't think hesitancy was one. But unwillingness and course correction would probably be applied.
Okay, no problem. I've seen Kirk saying, sorry, Kirk saying he course corrected. Anybody in disagreement? No, it doesn't seem to be so. What was the cause of his symptoms? Was it that the situation exceeded the extent of his judgement or foresight? Or that the situation exceeded the extent of his capabilities that led to him course correcting?
Foresight, he could see beyond his nose.
All right, Kirk says agreeing with you, Brother Smith. And Brother Lacount saying the same. So as we realised, Saul was in a situation, he knew based on the communication that he had with Samuel, that this was not something that he was supposed to do. He also knew that this was something that was supposed to be done before going into battle. Because he did not see Samuel coming and I'm presuming he did not believe that Samuel was going to come in time, he decided that he was going to take it upon himself to carry out that act. So we see where he course corrected. We can see where there was unwillingness, as Brother Smith said, this wasn't necessarily something that he wanted to do, but he felt that he was obligated to based on the circumstances.
My unwillingness was that he was unwilling to wait and obey. One says wait, wait.
Then all right, valid point, Brother Smith, valid point. All right, so we all agree, but Saul would have been in that situation. Kirk says, this is so typical for us whenever we feel we have hit or are going through a rough patch. Exactly. And when we look at some of the specifics in regards to how we get over these things, we'll see more clearly how badly we struggle. Or at least I can speak for myself, how badly I struggle with the bark bug. All right, next passage, we have the ten spies. Going to need three readers, so you can just raise your hand for me, please. All right, so we have Natasha, we have Kirk and we have Britannia. All right, so Natasha, you are yellow, Kirk, you are green and Britannia, you are blue. Natasha, you can begin.
Then Moses sent them to spy out the land of Canaan and said to them, go up this way into the south and go up to the mountains and see what the land is like, whether the people who dwell in it are strong or weak, few or many.
Well, the land they dwell in. Hold on a minute. Just a minute. Ah, I'm sorry. Whether the land they dwell in is good or bad, whether the cities they inhabit are like camps or stronghold, whether the land is rich or poor, and whether there are forests there or not, be of good courage and bring some of the fruit of the land. Now the time was the season of the first ripe grapes.
So they went up and spied out the land from the wilderness of Zin as far as Rehob near the entrance of Hamah. And they went up through the south and came to Hebron. Ahiman, Sheshai and Talmai, the descendants of Anak, were there. Now Hebron was built seven years before Zon in Egypt.
Then they came to the valley of Eshkol, and there cut down a branch with one cluster of grapes. They carried it between two of them on a pole. They also brought some of the pomegranates and figs. The place was called the Valley of Eshkol because of the cluster which the men of Israel cut down there. And they returned from spying out the land after forty days.
Now they departed and came back to Moses and Aaron and all the congregation of the children of Israel in the wilderness of Paran at Kadesh. They brought back word to them and to all the congregation and showed them the fruit of the land. Then they told him and said, we went to the land where you sent us. It truly flows with milk and honey, and this is its fruit.
Nevertheless, the people who dwell in the lands are strong. The cities are fortified and very large. Moreover, we saw the descendants of Anak there. The Amalekites dwell in the land of the south. The Hittites, the Jebusites and the Amorites dwell in the mountains. And the Canaanites dwell by the sea and along the banks of the Jordan.
Then Caleb quieted the people before Moses and said, let us go up at once and take possession, for we are well able to overcome it. But the men who had gone up with him said, we are not able to go up against the people, for they are stronger than we.
And they gave the children of Israel a bad report of the land, which they had spied out saying, the land to which we have gone, as spies in the land, that devours its inhabitants. And all the people whom we saw in it are men of great stature.
There we saw the giants, the descendants of Anak came from the giants. And we were like grasshoppers in our own sides, and so we were in their sight. And so were we in their sight.
All right, thank you. Well read again. Excellent stuff. All right, so most of us are already familiar with this story. Twelve spies were sent to spy out the land. Came back, gave a fairly progressive report initially of the strengths and weaknesses of the land. And then when Caleb suggested going and taking the land, the ten of the twelve spies commented that it was beyond them and that the people there were giants, etc., etc. Would you diagnose the ten spies with the bark bug? Yeah or no?
Eight of them.
Sorry, yes, the eight spies. Brother Smith say yes, Brother Lacount say yes. I guess people asking why you're asking these simple questions even pretty clear. All right, what symptoms did they show? Anybody?
Hesitancy and unwillingness.
All right, so hesitancy, unwillingness. All right, same thing from Kirk, same thing from Natasha. All right. What was the cause of their symptoms? Was it that the situation exceeded the extent of their judgement or foresight? Was it the situation exceeded the extent of their capabilities?
Capabilities, they thought the men were stronger and more than me.
All right, so greater in number, greater in strength.
I would not say capabilities because they were able to and they did overcome.
Let me change that. My apologies. Situation exceeded the extent of their capabilities in their head, but not necessarily.
So that's judgment then? That's judgment then?
It's judgement, but judgement of one's capabilities. So that should have been, so you can believe that you personally aren't capable, but that it still can come to fruition. And then you can also believe that won't come to fruition regardless of your capabilities. I don't know if that makes it any clearer.
Not for me.
Not for you. All right, let me break it down more effectively. So I believe that the reason this won't happen is because it is outside of me. It never had to do with me in the first place. So the limitation on whether something will come to be or not is because I cannot, I can't see beyond a particular point. So it's not so much that I can't say, no, I can't do this or I can't do this. It is because I can't see beyond a particular point. Whereas in another scenario, I can see the situation and I believe that I am incapable or I believe I am capable. So the first one would be where I can't see to the point where I can render if I am capable or not. Whereas the second one is I can see what the situation is and now I don't believe that I am capable. I don't know if that makes it any clearer, Brother Smith.
Hmm, not really. Moving the goalposts. But yeah, I'm not going to believe it, I understand the point.
All right, hopefully, when we look at some of the more prescriptive methods, it will make it a little clearer. But I understand, I understand what your contention is, Brother Smith. Maybe I haven't explained it as effectively as I.
Let me tell you what I suppose is causing my issue would be the issue of faith. We walk by faith, not by sight. And so therefore, for people like this, who has seen God clear, you know, open the sea, do all sorts of things, whatever it is, if they had proper perception, they should know that God wouldn't tell them to go and take this land unless he had a plan for it. That's what I mean. That's where I'm going.
Well, and I agree, I agree.
So it's really all of it is lack of judgement for me or foresight.
Okay, and
That's the point. So I don't want to believe it because I understand the distinction you make.
And I understand, you see, more, Brother Smith, thanks. Anybody else or we're good other than that? All right, wonderful. As I said, we're just using these passages to give us an understanding of how these diseases or disorders can manifest themselves in regular behaviour. And there's no better way to see that than in scripture. And then we look at how it affects us directly. All right, so we're looking at Thomas. We need two readers. All right, I'm seeing Paula. Britannia, you can't read again until somebody else from verse reads. So Paula and Brother Lacount. So Paula, you are yellow and Brother Lacount, you are blue. Paula, you can go ahead.
Then the same, then the same day at Yerem, being the first day of the week, when the door were shut, where the disciples were assembled for fear of the Jews, Jesus came and stood in the midst and said to them, peace be with you. When he had said this, he showed them his hand and his side. Then the disciples were glad when they saw the Lord. So Jesus said to them again, peace to you. As the Father has sent me, I also send you. And when he had said this, he breathed on them and said to them, receive the Holy Spirit. If you forgive the sin of any, they are forgiven them. If you retain the sin of any, they are retained.
Go ahead, Brother Lacount.
Now Thomas called the twin. One of the twelve was not with them when Jesus came. The other disciples therefore said to him, we have seen the Lord. So he said to them, unless I see his hands, the print of the nails, and put my finger into the print of the nails and put my hand into his side, I will not believe. And put my finger into the print of the nails and put my hand into his side, I will not believe. And after eight days, his disciples were again inside and Thomas with them. Jesus came, the door being shut, and stood in the midst and said, peace to you. Then he said to Thomas, reach your finger here, look at my hands, and reach your hand here and put it into my side. Do not be unbelieving, but believing. And Thomas answered and said to him, my Lord and my God. Jesus said to him, Thomas, because you have seen me, you have believed. Blessed are those who have not seen and yet have believed.
Alright, thank you, well read. This is Paula, well read, brother Lacun. Once again, another very familiar passage of scripture. Um, Thomas. Not believing that Jesus had risen until seeing Jesus and feeling the nails on the side. Or having Jesus tell him to do so. Um, Thomas, bark bug, yeah or nay? Probably I just should just ask nay, and if anybody says nay, then that means. I ask them why, and if not, then we presume everybody agrees. Alright, Natasha says yes, um, and says that the symptom that was showed was unwillingness. Um, Kirk agreeing with Natasha, anybody sees it differently? I would presume not, so wonderful. Um, what was?
Could be hesitancy, he said I'd have to see first.
So hesitancy showed up late, and Kirk saying hesitant as well, um. What, what was the cause? Alright, so Kirk says both. Alright, so um, I know definitively, um, in regards to his judgment or foresight, I presume he didn't believe. That it was, Jesus was capable of returning from the dead and thus needed proof. Tangible proof for, for him to believe that. Sorry, I see, I missed something in the chat. It's Natasha, um, Britannia saying judgment and foresight. Alright, last, last passage. Hold on, Natasha, raise your hand, you raise your hand, go ahead. Oh, oh, this is for the, the reader, but alright, I need two readers. Alright, so um, set up, you're big yellow, and I'll be, you are green, you can start, it's a title.
Now Sarah, Abraham's wife, had born him no children, but she had an Egyptian slave named Hagar. So she said to Abraham, the Lord has kept me from having children. Go sleep with my slave, perhaps I can build a family through her. Abraham agreed to what Sarah said.
So after Abraham had been living in Canaan ten years, Sarah has, his wife. Took her Egyptian slave Hagar and gave her, to her husband to be his wife. He slept with Hagar and she conceived. When she knew she was pregnant, she began to despise her mistress.
Alright, thank you, well read, well read, very short passage here. Um, alright, question. Would you di- diagnose Abraham and Sarah or any one of them with the bark bug?
Yes, both of them.
Alright, so Natasha says yes, both of them, anybody in disagreement? Okay, everybody in agreement there? What symptoms did they show?
All of them. They were hesitant and unwilling um, to trust God's plan and they changed the course of action.
Alright, seen agreement from brother Ant. Oh, sorry. What, what was the cause?
I say both again.
So Sarah did comment on the fact that she was incapable of producing a child. So she looked at the idea that she, her capabilities were already exceeded. And in her lack of judgment, she underestimated God's ability to carry things out in a particular manner. Alright, thank you, wonderful job guys going through that. Um, let's get to the main, the main meat of the matter. As we said, as much as we want to look at these things and identify what is wrong or what may be the issue. If we cannot find corrective measures, if we cannot find ways to apply them specifically. Then it is going to be very difficult for us to move forward, and that's the main, the main goal from this study. So um, on our list of treatments slash prevention, we have a couple of pills. So we have the pill of present tense, we have the pill of past providence, and we have the pill of post-promising. Pill of present tense, pill of past providence, and the pill of post-promising. And hopefully, in taking these pills, we will find a way to treat the bark bug or to prevent it. So um, before we get into that password. Let me see, but alright, go ahead Britannia.
The password is price copying chemotherapy.
Okay, that is correct. I need to stop there before we, we move on, because clearly that is enough of a clue as to what we're going to do right after. Alright. So the pill of present tense. When they look at some scriptures to see if we can understand properly what this is speaking about. The first one is Matthew chapter six.
Then Stephen.
Go ahead Kirk.
I'm going back to, to Thomas. Um, is, is, is there anything wrong with what he did?
What you define as wrong?
Um, let me, let me just tell you where I'm going, um. One, I, I, I gather, and I may be wrong, but I gather that um, they didn't have a, a reference for um, someone being raised. Um, from the dead, so.
They would have Lazarus, Lazarus being raised. Um, and there are a couple of scenarios where I think Jesus raised a few other people, they probably weren't dead for long. But, yeah, but I don't think there's any reference for somebody raising themselves from the dead.
Right.
Yeah.
Again, I don't, I don't, there is no record in the Bible um, that he doubted again. Um, um, so, um, I think he's like, alright, um, I'm gonna step out, but um. Um, let, give me, give me something for hold on, I'm sorry, cool, alright, alright, I believe you now, I'm good, you know. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not too sure if something is wrong with that. I, I can understand you constantly questioning, asking for evidence, wavering. But if it is a thing where you're gonna make a big step on your counter cost, um, can it be seen that way?
The brother Lacun brought up one of the things that I was going to say. Um, so Jesus told his disciples what was going to happen. It's not a case where um, he, it went, they went in blindly. With no explanation, that Jesus just get taken away, Jesus is killed. And as far as Jesus has given them information, they wouldn't know what is going to happen after that. It wasn't that, not taking away from the fact that um, just hearing of somebody re- raising from the dead and seeing it is the same thing. But Thomas wasn't operating blindly, he did have Jesus's word. That this was something that was going to, to occur, so um. Okay, go ahead, I see a hand, don't it, that brother, um, brother Smith or brother Ron? Or brother Engel, could be any of them, admin, you can go ahead and ask the question or make a statement. Hello, admin? Hello, alright, admin, as soon as you, you hear.
No, it's, sorry, sorry, my, my phone was messing around, thanks. Um, well, it's in response to what Kirk had mentioned. I guess one, one of the things that comes to mind is the, the same passage that you mentioned. Um, at the end of it, Jesus said that, um, that he should push his hand in his side and in his arms. One of the things that I would add on to what you said, Stephen, in the sense that Jesus did tell them that it would, it would happen. And um, at the end of the statement, Jesus said, stop doubting and, and believe. But you know, sometimes my mind goes where Kirk is going in terms of, it's, it's what they would have seen. You, you know, what they would have seen on the cross. What they would have seen on the cross was, was, was what a lot of people were seeing in terms of. The ones, especially the ones who were mocking Jesus, they would have seen defeat. You're talking um, Jesus that would, he would have been stripped, with, with the exception of probably a lion cloth, he would have. Been beaten to an inch of his life, he would be hanging on a cross, bleeding. Um, and it looked like defeat. I, I think the, the, the challenge, the challenge that I, I suspect um, Thomas and possibly others would, would see is that. Yeah, I, you know, you, you said that you would raise yourself from the dead, et cetera, et cetera, but. I'm looking at defeat right now, and I've actually witnessed you die on the cross. And, and I think that is maybe the, the powerful message of the gospel, in the, in the sense that despite all of that. Um, he was raised from the dead. So while I, I think from a human perspective, we can understand where Thomas is coming from. Um, the, 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 the comment that Jesus made in terms of stop doubting and believe, I think we're, we're. Where the passage is, 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 is putting us, is on a plane where Jesus is expecting um, more. In terms of, he was expecting more of his disciples, in the sense that there's a reason why all of this happened. And you know what's interesting as well is even the Lazarus passage, I was reading it the other day, the same John eleven. Um, in the sense that when he heard that Lazarus um, was sick, he delayed. And even while he is there talking to his disciples, he says that, and I'm, I'm glad I delayed. Because um, a, a large part of it is, is you, you. It seems as if they understood him on a theoretical level. Say yes, you know, I can do stuff, et cetera, et cetera. But it seemed as if there was a purpose for Jesus to lead till Lazarus is there in the grave for three, four days. Till one of his, his sister said, but he stink right now. And I think that is, that is the point that Jesus was, was making, so listen, it doesn't matter if him just dead, if him stink. Or if he is there um, sick, I can do whatever I want because I have the power to do so. Um, so I, I think all this time he was on earth, he was preparing them. So I, I, I preparing them to, to accept more than just from a human perspective. So you know, it's something I think about in terms of what Kirk is asking, in terms of why, um, if he did anything wrong. I think from a human perspective, it's, 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 it's um, it's understandable. But I think the comment that Jesus made suggests. I will, I, I would think more than suggest, it, it's pointing to the fact that he's expecting more from his disciples. Because he even went further to say that, listen, you believe because you see. There are many who are going to believe because, and, and they have not seen.
Excellent point, excellent point, brother, brother Ron. And um, to, to jump on, to add an extra point to that, um, as was communicated. Um, by Christina. Thomas had no reason to believe that the other disciples were lying to him. So remember when Thomas found out that Jesus was raised from the dead by the disciples telling him that they had seen him? If it were somebody on the street or some random person saying that, boy, Jesus was raised. Then you can't understand the doubt there, but the fact that these are people who. You should presume are struggling with the same, the same issues that you were struggling with, having seen him die, having seen. Um, all the struggles that he went through and that the last people that would want to give your father hope. Are the one saying, hey, we saw Jesus, we saw Jesus, he's alive, then um, I think. They, they should have, there's understanding why Jesus would say, boy, um, you shouldn't be unbelieving. But I am not downplaying how, um, the difficulty that Thomas may have been feeling and why. He, he wanted that assurance. At the end of the passage, Jesus did berate kindly, mind you, berate Thomas for being unbelieving. And encouraging him to believe as well as um, giving, giving accolades to those who believe without. And for, for us as Christians, we don't have the liberty to push our hands in the nail, in the nail marks or in the spear. So we, we only have one option, and that is to, to believe without having seen. Um, I don't know if that addressed, or if Kirk, you have a follow up? Kirk? Okay, Kirk says he's good, that wonderful. Alright, so um, pill of present tense. So the idea of the pill of present tense is that it helps us to focus in the present. It helps us to focus in the present. And we're going to look at how some, some ways of focusing on the present can help us to overcome or doubt. And, or, um, or worry. So Matthew chapter six. We're very familiar with this passage, a part of um, the Lord's prayer, as we dub it. Give us this day or daily bread. So this day, the word here means on this, on the day. So it doesn't necessarily have to mean literally this day, but more often than not, when used in this format, it means. The day in question. Ie now, at present. Um, so it doesn't necessi- it doesn't necessarily have to literally be from twelve AM to twelve PM. It can be used to mean right now, at this time period, in the present. And then daily. However, that word is pronounced in Greek is an adjective which refers to for subsistence. So literally for, or another word we can use is sustenance. Needful or necessity. So a lot of the times, we speak of, we speak of daily bread. And we only think of, we only think of food, we only think of food. But it can be in reference to anything that is needed. So, and the phrase daily bread was a commonly used phrase at the time. So this word here, meaning for subsistence, biblically speaking as a Greek word, was only seen. As paired with daily bread, so the phrase that people would throw out, not necessarily meaning bread firstly, not only meaning food. But also things that are needed for everyday life, so shelter, clothing, et cetera. Could fall under the category or the, the phrase daily bread. So one of the things that the pill of present tense helps us to focus on is whether we are receiving our daily bread. A lot of worries, a lot of anxieties, a lot of doubts. Stem from our perception, we want things outside of the present. So whether it is weekly, monthly, yearly, future, future concerns, a lot of the time presents. Cause for doubt, cause for worry. If we focused a bit more on whether we were receiving daily, presently, now. If the things that I need are being taken care of, a lot of the doubts and the worries would not. would not, not, would not even be applicable. A lot of the times, it is because of the, how far in the future we are concerning ourselves. Especially when it comes on to things that we create doubts and anxiety. Another aspect is the necessity part. A lot of the times, we place priority not on what we need, but on what we want. So there's an issue with us looking beyond today, looking beyond now for things that shouldn't concern us at the moment. Then there's the issue of looking beyond what I need and being preoccupied with what I want. And a lot of our doubts, a lot of our worries, a lot of our anxiety stem from where, from when the things that we want are not the things that we are getting. And our priority in regards to what it is that we, that is important to us is less based on the things that we want, I mean, less based on the things that we need and more on the things that we want. If we can hone in on the, the fact or the idea that our daily bread will be provided, and daily today, and then when I reach into tomorrow, my daily bread will be provided. And when I reach in the day after that, my daily bed, bread will be provided. Then that will help us to cast off some of the anxiety about the things in the future. So one of the big things here is trying to, to, to focus daily. Matthew six, jumping now to verse twenty seven. These are very short, I'm not going to ask for readers. Um which of you by worrying can add one cubit to his stature? His stature, sorry. So the word worrying here, as used in this passage, means to be anxious. To be careful or have care. So careful here doesn't necessarily mean to walk and, and ensure that things don't happen to you. That's not the careful. That careful there literally means full of care. So the full there essentially means full of. So to be careful there, to be full of care, have whole heap of things that are, that you're concerned about, that you care. Um not care as in love and, and um being nice and, and being considerate, but care as in cares of the world, the things that, that distress us or cause us anxiety. So which of you by worrying, which of you by being full of care can add one cubit to his stature? Cubit is a measure of length. Um essentially, it was used, it was used in reference to from the elbow to the tip of the finger, so the forearm, and that was used as a measure. So the forearm was, was essentially a cubit. So if you look from the elbow to your, the tip of your finger, that was essentially a, a cubit. And stature here, meaning maturity in year or size. So maturity either as um and in regards to something growing in regard um in length or growing in age. And based on this context, we can presume it is in size or in length. So Jesus is asking the question, which of you by worrying can add one cubit to his stature? And Jesus uses a rhetorical um question in this scenario to reinforce that we are already well aware of the uselessness of worry. If we weren't aware, then Jesus would have phrased this by saying none of you by worrying can add one cubit to his stature. He would make a declarative sentence. He would let them know that, guess what? When you worry, it changes nothing. There is no benefit, there are no positive benefits to worrying. However, Jesus poses it rhetorically to help them realize that they already know. And that is, that is one of the big things with worrying. You get so preoccupied in the process that you forget that you know that it is a, it is of no use to you at all. So one of the aspects of um the pill of present tense is recognizing that if it cannot do anything in the present, it is not beneficial behavior. So if worrying literally has no benefit to me right now, then it is, as Jesus would say, um a wasteful endeavor. Well, I don't know if Jesus would say that, but it sounded like something Jesus would say. Alright, one more passage. The Matthew chapter six, and we jump to verse thirty four. Therefore do not worry about tomorrow, for tomorrow will worry about its own things. Sufficient for the day is its own trouble. Sufficient, literally meaning satisfactory or enough sufficient. The day, we'll just look at that when Jesus said daily bread and give us this day. So it doesn't necessarily mean day twelve to twelve, but right now, in the present. Presently, there is enough things for you to concern yourself with, to be looking outside of the present. And in trouble here, meaning badness, and subjectively, it can mean depravity. So it doesn't necessarily have to mean sinfulness. It can literally mean something that is bad or difficult. But it can also mean something sinful. So the idea behind the pill of present tense, especially read this passage, is identifying that you have enough to concern yourself with right now. Adding to that, not only presents anxiety and worry, it makes it more difficult for you to deal with what you need to deal with today. A lot of times, we are unproductive. A lot of times, we do not get through the things we need to get through on a day-to-day basis, because we are tackling things that are not today's problem. We're tackling things that are not today's trouble. So I am trying to deal with today, tomorrow, next week, two months in the future, when today's problems are enough. And I'm not saying, please note, I'm not saying that this isn't blind-eyed. I'm not saying that if there are things that you can do today to help tomorrow, that you shouldn't do them. But the point is, to, it can be done today. If it is something that you cannot do today, then you are bothering yourself with problems of tomorrow, when you have enough problems today. So the pill of present tense, the, the intent is to get us to focus on today. Focus on now, focus on present. What can I do? What am I bothering myself with that I cannot do right now? That is the mentality that we should have. So I'm just going to break down the pill so that we can understand it effec- effectively and then give you the password. And we are concluded for this evening. So um pill of present tense, first point, be present to the presence of present presence. Be present to the presence of present presence. So essentially what this means is be aware, so the first present there means be aware of the presence, this being things around you of the presence that you have right now. And present there being gifts, present there being things that are beneficial to you. A lot of the times, our anxiety and our worries draw strength from the fact that we are not grateful for what we have right now. If we take a step back and look at all the blessings that God has given us, of all the things that we have right now, tangibly and intangibly, then a lot of the things that we start to concern ourselves with will fade away. A lot of the times, our worry and our doubt are comparatively done. And if we ever, one of the easiest ways to identify how this comes into fruition is when you get back something that you lost. So for example, health, you, we don't appreciate it when it's there. But when we lose it, that is when we start to say, boy, I wish it was back. And when, and the instant it returns, we're like, oh my gosh, it's so amazing. But sadly, that doesn't last for a long period of time. If we try to get in the mindset where we are present to the presence of these presents, then it will help us to deal with the worry and deal with the doubt. Next point, so essentially it means appreciate the things I have right now. Concern myself with only what can benefit the present situation. So concern myself with only what can benefit the present situation. So as I said, your action doesn't necessarily have to mean that you're not doing things for the future. But if it is not benefiting you right now, then do not concern yourself. Or better yet, if it has negative effect to you right now, don't allow that to beset you. Worry only makes matters worse. There is no situation that worrying will aid. There's no situation that you will be in a better position because you have worried. The minute worry gets in, you are now operating from a ground that is more difficult than before you worried. So you only make the task harder. And lastly, deal with problems as they present themselves. One of the biggest things with doubt and anxiety is that they create problems that do not exist. Or they add on to problems that are currently existing. If we learn to deal with the problems as they present themselves, as Jesus said, sufficient for today are its own troubles. Sometimes we create problems by trying to see into the future. What is going to happen now? This is not happening. I don't feel it will happen tomorrow. I don't feel it will start out then. And all of these things start popping into your head, and now you're not only struggling with what you have to do now. You're trying to find an answer to the things that you think will happen tomorrow. You're trying to find an answer to the things that you think will happen next week. But this bill needs to pay, how are we starting that out? If you cannot do anything about it now, then it is not your present problem. Your present problems are the things that you can do something about. And you here, not necessarily meaning that you have the money, you have the, you can take steps. You can go ask someone, you can et cetera, you can do something. If you have no actions that you can take in dealing with the situation, it is not a present problem. Do not allow it to worry you right now. When you can do something about it, when you can try to find an avenue to solve it, that is when it is a present problem. A lot of our present problems don't get solved because we're dealing with future problems. Alright, so um we have an exercise that we're going to do starting next week, or I mean, Sunday coming. So um this is where we're going to stop for today. And before we end, just going to tell you the password is bark bug. Password is bark bug. So come Sunday, you can get points for your team by repeating the password. Um thank you for the participation. Love the reading. Hope that it will continue to be as bri- as vibrant and as energetic. Um appreciate the participation from everyone and everyone who has tuned in. For those who may be visitors, I think I saw a few visitors or one or two. Um really appreciate you tuning in and we hope that you will continue to. Um handing over now to the closing prayer individual.